Thirty, and we'll call the Clay County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, February 7th, to order. First thing on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Move of approval.
Second?
Motion by Commissioner Campbell, second by Commissioner Krabbenhoff. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? I'll entertain a motion for approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
Offered, Mr. Chair.
Wait a second.
Second.
Okay. A motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Campbell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. At this point, we have opportunity for citizens to be heard. Citizens can come forward and speak on any issue that is not on the agenda. Do we have any citizens here wishing to speak? Mr. Larson, have we had anybody contact us or anybody want to speak remotely?
Oh, we have not, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Move forward then to approval of the minutes from January 17th and January 24th.
Unloved.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Krabbenhoff, second by Commissioner Campbell. Any discussion? Any correction of the minutes? If not, all in favor of approving the... Can we do both minutes at same motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All those in favor of approval signify with aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion passes. Next on the agenda, we have employee recognition. The first person we want to present an award to is Shannon Thompson, 15 years with solid waste. They're pretty busy out there. And Cory Bang is here to accept, in her behalf, and speak a little bit about her.
Yes, Shannon informed me that only one of us could be here today because we're kind of swamped, so she elected me, which is fine, but she is a very valuable asset to me out there and to the county in general. She knows your stuff, and I'm proud to accept this on her behalf.
Next, we're recognizing 20 years of service in social services to Melissa Boningheimer. I got it out. And Sandy Thorne is here.
Well, I have to say that Clay County got really lucky 20 years ago when Melissa came on board. She's moved up through the unit, and she's now a child support officer establishing new orders. And she loves statistics and crunching numbers and keeping track of things. She does a lot of things for the whole unit, like pulling the court calendars and has really stepped up with training new staff. And yeah, it would be a loss if we didn't have her in our unit because she's really on the ball, and we're very fortunate to have her.
And last, we have Cindy Arons, 25 years with social services. Okay. Holly Winters here to speak on her behalf.
Thank you. So Cindy unfortunately is unable to make it this morning, so I will accept on her behalf. But Cindy started with us 25 years ago. She came here from Lacker Powell County, if I'm saying that right, started in our child welfare system, worked there for a number of years before moving over to disability services. Cindy said, told me this morning, she said, "I remember getting that phone call from Rhonda offering me the position," and was ecstatic about that. So Cindy is a great asset to our unit. She's got many great qualities in this position. One that stands out the most is her relationships that she builds with the people she works with and our providers, and that really goes a long way in getting people the services that they need. So thank you for this honor.
Certainly. Thank you for coming on her behalf. Okay, next on the agenda is one of our annual department updates from the assessor's office. We have Nancy Gunderson, County Assessor, who will present that for us.
Good morning, Chair, Governor, and fellow commissioners. I'll start with staffing. We will be down one employee come February 10th. One of our deputy appraisers positions will be open at that time, so I'll be back to fill that. We wrapped up Assessment 2022 mid-January as it relates to splits, combinations, granting of homesteads, and qualifying tax programs. One program I will highlight is the Disabled Veterans Exemption Program. Participants in this program have grown over the past five years. An example is Assessment 18, Pay in 19. There were 235 in the program, and now for Assessment 22, Pay in 23, there are 416 participants. That's a 77% increase. Now on to Assessment 2023. Setting of rates and values based on sales activity from October of '21 through September of '22. As we prepare to set values for the '23 assessment, I want to share with you an update on the market trends that we've seen this past year and what it means for the 2023 assessed values. Values are set as of January 2nd each year and are based primarily on market activity from October to the following September. These market trends are calculated by the Minnesota Department of Revenue's Data and Analysis Department, and they do that for every class of property, ag, apartment, commercial, industrial, and residential, which is based on those valid sales. This is completed for every county statewide. These trends are used to forward adjust sale prices as the market changes to the January 2nd assessment date, which is what we are required to use to establish current market values. During late 2021 into '22, still reflected a strong residential market, even though mortgage rates climbed. As a result, Clay County has a positive residential market trend of about 9% annually. The city of Morehead had a positive market trend of just about 10%, but Morehead appealed their trend for a slight reduction, and Department of Revenue actually ended up removing it completely. Agricultural values have increased at a substantial pace during this past study period. Clay County started with a time trend of just about 29%. This time trend was calculated based on 73 past sales during a 21-month study. In November, I appealed to Department of Revenue's data analysis. After further review, Department of Revenue granted my appeal to lower the time trend, and a new time trend has been applied to the current 51 valid sales at a rate of about 19.6%, a drop of roughly 10 points. I will highlight the starting county ratios of the five main property types. Any jurisdiction that has six or more sales will be treated as standalone ratios, meaning that the ending ratio needs to be in the compliance range of 90 to 105%. Also, Department of Revenue calculates a five-year history and a small sample report. These reports are used to review if there is a pattern of low or high ratios during that period of time that might warrant some attention by the county. And for Assessment 23, there are multiple jurisdictions and property types that need to be studied. So for our residential and seasonal rec, we had 878 valid sales countywide, but that was down 160 sales from last year's study. The median sales ratio, when you take the 22 estimated market value and divided by the time-adjusted sale price, we're at 88.1%. If not including Morehead City sales, there's a total of 238 sales with a median ratio of about 85%. Ag sales, there are 51 sales countywide of ag bare land consisting of 34 and 1/2 acres or more, with the applied positive market trend of 19.6%. That median ratio now stands at 61.56%. Commercial, we had 28 countywide sales, no market trend, with a starting ratio of just under 88%. Without City of Morehead sales, there are five valid with a starting ratio of 107.8. Industrial, we had three sales countywide, no market trend, with a starting rate of just under 49%. Apartments, 24 sales countywide with a median ratio of just under 87%. There is no market trend applied, and without the Morehead sales, there were three with a ratio of roughly 78%. There will not be any blanket increases applied across the county. Consideration is given to different locations within the county. Example, tillable land or the type of improvement on the property, again, location, style of house, size, et cetera. So residential, ag and house, ag, house and garage. Countywide percentage increases are projected to be anywhere from 10% to 20%, depending on where they are located. The city of Morehead is projecting a 5%. Tillable land, we'll be seeing a very large increase per acre. Example, the valley land approximately a 45% increase. So if last year's value was $5,000 an acre, it would be at least $7,200 an acre, sorry. And the range of increases will be anywhere from 25% to 85% increases in our tillable land values across the county. Meadow and pasture land will also see a slight increase of about 30%. Department of Revenue does increase, or does look at the ag first-tier limit on homestead ag property each year. So for Pay 22 and Pay 23, they were the same. It was $1,890,000 of value. It's the benefit of the .5. What they have now set for Pay 24 is $2,150,000. That's only a 13.7% increase. So a lot of that value will certainly go beyond where that new tier limit is. And again, that's on homestead agricultural property. Commercial, industrial, and apartment values, we'll be seeing some increases as well. I just, we haven't had, pinned those down yet. Local Board of An Appeal for the calendar year of '23. There's only six jurisdictions that hold their own meetings in '23. Notices to those boards will go out before February 15th for those boards to post and publish. The rest of Clay County cities and townships are under the Open Book format, which is scheduled to start April 24th at the Government Center. County Board of Equalization has been scheduled for June 13th with the start date of, start time, sorry, of 6:30. So mass appraisal onsite visits that are being planned for the summer and fall of '23 for Assessment 24 are Holly City, Hitterdall City, Cromwell, Flowing, Glendon Township, Gooseberry, Highland Grove, and Spring Prairie, for a total of 2,640 to meet our quintile. And along with doing follow-up of zoning certificates and building permits. With the mass appraisal work that was conducted during the calendar year of 2022, appraisers also started the process of converting the crop equivalency ratings, CERs, to Crop Productivity Index, CPI, with the drawing out of parcels on the soils mapping. Seven jurisdictions have been drawn on the new web-based soils module from the USDA, Natural Resources Conservation Service, which will provide a relative ranking of soils based on their potential for intensive crop production. An index can be used to rate the potential yield of one soil against another over a period of time. Ratings will range from a zero to 100. The higher the number indicates higher production potential. Appraisers are drawing out building sites, tillable land, wood, pasture, wasteland, et cetera. The tillable acreage will convert to the CPI rating. With each quintile scheduled, appraisers will draw out the property types. We are looking to complete this project and use for Assessment 2028. The sales will dictate where the tillable values will be. CPI is just a more current and up-to-date ranking that farmers and the ag finance industry uses. The Soil Modular was purchased with the Recorder's Technology Fund and County Board approval. During the months of May and June, we will be working with Vanguard staff to upgrade to their new cost manual and implement it for Assessment 24. Vanguard staff will spend a day of training onsite after Vanguard's technical staff has upgraded our database and it's reinstalled in our system. They will work with us to make upgrades that fall in line with our sales. There's some new features that will come with this cost manual. There'll be some more details and valuation components for residential garages, more occupancy styles for commercial and exempt properties, and the creation of shelters, which are becoming a little bit more popular out in the county as well. The last thing I'll highlight is our current tax court petitions. Currently, we have one in the city of Dilworth, which is Walmart for Pay 21, and then there's a case in the city of Morehead, Runnings, who is a tenant in a strip mall along Highway 10, and there's two years' worth there for Pay 21 and Pay 22. Cases that were stipulated during '22 include a restaurant in Morehead, which is three years' worth of payables, payable '21, '22, and '23. The strip mall that I talked about where Runnings is located was also stipulated, and that was stipulated for Pay 21, '22, and '23 as well. We had apartment owner with four apartment parcels for Pay 22, and I want to thank then the county attorney's office and his staff, and also Nathan Akri, who's a city assessor in Morehead, for all of their diligence and hard work on these cases. That ends my report.
Nancy, in your report, you had mentioned that the city of Morehead's increase showed 10% and that they appealed it with Department of Revenue. Did I understand that correctly? And did you say that they removed it completely?
Yes, they did.
So it went from 10 to 0?
Yes.
So I often talk about how when property values increase, as long as they increase proportionately, there really isn't, and we as a county board maintain a fairly level budget, that there shouldn't, you shouldn't see a significant swing. Sometimes there is between ag and, you know, but that's really not our doing. But won't this create a big swing for everybody outside of Morehead? In terms of paying for a piece of the pie?
It could, definitely, because the rural and the small cities would be probably seeing a larger increase in value versus the city's residential population. So yes, it means that they would get a bigger slice of the pie.
And I appreciate that you did, I know you talked about the ag one, that you appealed, and it went, you know, there was a 10% drop. So I do appreciate that. I just really struggle with removing something completely when we all know values are increasing. And that's not your issue at all. It's just side comment, but...
Well, if I can, Commissioner, it just goes to, you know, what I've always said here is typically, when we see from community to community throughout the county, we don't really see a, maybe, we don't really see a 10% swing more in one community than another community in terms of property value rising. And in this particular case, because Morehead's was kept at zero increase, and if the rest of the county increases by that average of 9% or 10% that you talked about, that is going to change who pays what share in terms of the total. And I guess I just, I want to bring that out right now and saying that this was done by the Department of Revenue, who does this?
Yes.
And not by the county, because it kind of goes against what I've been saying in terms of, as long as everything goes up proportionally, and we as a board are, you know, if we, if we're somewhat consistent in our levy increases, that people shouldn't see drastic increases in their share of the cost of the county operations. But this could be, taking 10% away from the city of Morehead, that can make, that could make a significant difference for outlying areas in a cost comparison. And I just, I just want to bring that up, and it's, this was, and again, I bring it up because it was the Department of Revenue who did this, and not the county, so...
And that wasn't what the city was, assessor's office was looking for. They were looking for a slight reduction. Past history, we've always been just under what their time trend has been, kind of always taken a little faster time trend there, but he wasn't looking for a complete zero.
Yeah. Yeah. I just, I just find it kind of surprising that they would go from, you know, on an appeal, go from 10 to 0. I find that pretty interesting.
Commissioner Krabbenhoff?
This is a little bit of follow-up on that. So did the, Holly, Barnesville, did they have that same opportunity to go for an appeal?
Yes, I could have brought an appeal on any time trend, but I just didn't think that the residential was out of line based on what I've seen. But I did think that the ag one was quite strong, so I did try to appeal that one.
Okay. So that part of the appeal process is, comes from you, is that correct? Okay. Just wanted to make sure on that. Yeah. And as realtor, I mean, it's not hard to believe it's 9% or toward that, yeah, so. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mojo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Nancy, for this presentation. It's always really helpful, sometimes painful, to hear the percentages, particularly ag land, and I'm sure the meeting in June will have a vibrant discussion regarding that. Part of my comments is, you know, we have this MCC JPA that talks about mitigating land with the diversion in southern Clay County, and your presentation today, I think, would be really helpful to either forward to the other members of that board as we're dealing with land buyouts and rural property buyouts. You know, we're understanding it because we're hearing the report from you, but there's a couple Morehead City Council members and a watershed member that I think need to understand the whole picture on what valuations are. And certainly, there's appraisals, and appraised and assessed can vary, but I think it is, it would be helpful as we deal with mitigating those property owners.
Mr. Chair, if I can have a follow-up too with Commissioner Mojo's account. So, and we have, we have bought out a few properties, and we've used an appraisal basis on those properties. Are those properties that MCC JPA buys out for a project, are they considered in the sales values?
No, we keep them out because they're being a government agency.
Okay. 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 I was just curious if they were part of the numbers in the sales data. Okay. Thank you.
And I've been, I've brought that up over the, you know, past six to nine months as we've progressively seen farmland sales go up, to caution that we're using the most current and understand it's a little bit of a volatile system, right? What values are if you're seeing ag land in Iowa go for $20,000 and $30,000 an acre. So understanding that can change, but, you know, particularly if we're seeing, you know, upwards of 45% increases on, that really should be taken into account.
Anything else? Thank you, Nancy. Next on the agenda, we have the annual department update of Technology Services with Rory Schmidt, the Technology Services Director. Rory?
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you. This morning, we'll kind of review what, where we're sitting as far as IT department and kind of get you up to speed and show you what we have planned for this year of So currently, we have four computer support specialists, four systems administrators, and myself. We have such a great team currently. The staff works hard. There's almost nothing we can't handle that comes our way. We've done such a great job, and I'm proud to be working with the staff that I have. We, employee counts have stayed relatively flat the last couple of years, about 615, 620 employees. Our staff covers, takes care of all those 615 employees, plus we cover 16 different buildings or sites. Current staff ratio is about 77 to 1, so employees to IT staff. That compared to some of the other counties I've been hearing from, that's, we're kind of middle to high range there, but I think we're sitting okay. We support 800 computers, just a little over 900 desk phones, cell phones, tablets. We support those and a mobile device manager as well, so we can control the devices after, as they're off our network, and push out applications and software and do remote support and troubleshooting for those as well. We also keep track and maintain over 3,000 active assets, you know, computers, wireless access points, different IT equipment throughout the county. Along that, there's another 2,500 that are decommissioned that we keep track of for so many years, just, just to report on, just to make sure we have done our due diligence to keep a handle on those and make sure our database is up to date on those as well. Last thing we mainly support is Social Services, Electronic Document Management System. I don't know if any of you are familiar with it, but it's a, it's called Caseworks. We actually host it for Clay County plus 20 other counties. So that generates a, just a little bit of revenue for us, and if you look on, you should have an attachment that I submitted to you, but there's, you know, it's not, it's not a whole lot of money, but it's, it's a little bit of revenue, so it just shows you the last five years or four years plus what we're expecting in 2023 as well. Just kind of give you an idea of where we're at, and that, and those amounts will fluctuate based on the different additions that each county kind of subscribes to with us. It's managed by another third-party company, but we host it here at Clay County.
Can I just, if I can? So, so when we host these other 20 counties, they're, it's hosting their data, is that...
Correct. Yep.
So, so that cost then is probably somewhat offset, or that income is offset by what we have to do in terms of storage capacity?
Yeah, so the, so the income we receive on that, or revenue we receive, I guess the payments or the subscription, I'll take about 2/3 of that and put it towards the system, the software, and licensing and hardware that takes to maintain it, and then this, the leftover, the other 1/3 is, that's where you're seeing the dollar amounts there on that, on the sheet.
So that's, this is the actual revenue that you anticipate after the additional expenditure by...
Correct. Yep. Yep, so that's coming all back to the county then.
Thank you for that clarification.
This next slide here outlines where we're sitting as far as helped us service requests over the last few years here. You can see a kind of spike there in COVID, during COVID 2020, 2021. We're relatively flat there for 2022 as well. We anticipate probably around the same amount, you know, about 4,000 service requests for this next year as well, maybe, you know, give or take a few hundred. A couple of nice, nice stats, we're seeing, you know, just incoming service requests per month, about 330, you know, out of the 20 to 22 days per month that we, we have. We have some, you know, 24/7 departments that we're, my staff is on call for as well, you know, nights and weekends, things like that. Our front door... Our, our front door, we have a, a doorbell that tracks, you know, how many staff or how many people come for support and different things. So we, we track that. And our help desk calls per month, about 110, 10 calls per month just through our help desk line. And that doesn't include the, the number of times staff will call one of my staff directly. This is just our main, main help desk line. Some costs that go along with some, you know, just our different employee costs, you know, as we add new employees, you know, it, it's, it's more than you would think, you know? In 2022, we, we saw kind of an average of about $2,400 per, per new employee for equipment and software and licensing. And those numbers were still a little inflated due to, you know, the pandemic, things like that, electronic shortages, material shortages. In 2023 here already, I've already received some, some quotes and estimates on new hardware, laptops, computers, and we're already seeing a, quite a bit of a reduction there. So we're, we're hoping the onboarding costs are a little less so we can get a little more bang for our buck and, you know, replace some of this equipment each year. The annual expenses, that would be more software and licensing. So going forward here, we, we've been evaluating our, our phone system. It's starting to get to the end of its life on its current version. It's, it's still supported here, I think, for another year or so. But we're looking at doing a cloud-based phone system, help out a little bit with the remote workers. You know, overall comparing the hardware it takes, the staff time, the, the maintenance, the licensing, some, everything that goes into it, may be able to save a little bit of money if we go to that cloud route. So we're looking at that. And if we do that, because our phone system right now is not dependent on the internet, we would look at a redundant internet connection here for the county. So if our connection with the state of Minnesota went down, now this would automatically fail over, so we'd still have phone calls, you know, Microsoft Office, email, things like Last year, we've worked pretty diligently with Minnesota BCA FBI on some of our policies, procedures, our requirements that, that we need to follow to stay in compliance. So we've been really enhancing our security footprint, our baseline, and we plan to continue that trend here in 2023, along with, you know, updated policies for incident response plans, cybersecurity plans and policies, and, you know, kind of our staff standard operating procedures as well. That's all I have. Any, any questions?
Any questions? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Justin, you're, you're up for a number of things. First, first thing we've got on the agenda is approval to advertise for SAP 014-618-016.
Yes, so this is the paving project on CASA 18. We were awarded $800,000 in LRIP funds in 2021. So this will go from 80th Street South, which is just a mile west of the Buffalo, all the way to Trunk Highway 9. Kind of what makes this route important is it will make it CASA 18, a continuous 10-ton roadway from Trunk Highway 9 to the beet plant. And my proposed letting date would be March 14.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve advertisement.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Mojo, seconded by Commissioner Campbell. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, passes. Your next item.
Yeah, so my second item is requesting approval of the low bid from Redstone Construction in the amount of $849,941. So this is for the removal of the North Broadway Bridge. So we had multiple discussions with the city of Fargo and Mindott and feel as though this was a competitive bid. And due to the volatile state of the bridge, we feel we should move forward with the project. We were able to secure bridge bond funds to fund our half, and the city of Fargo did approve funding their half last night.
And just to set the record right, you're addressing item eight. And we can, we can proceed with that, but then we'll have to go back to six and seven as well.
No, this is just the low bid. I believe that's my first. The final item is for a grant agreement and resolution.
Yeah, this is for the low bid.
This is just to approve the low bid.
Okay.
The funding piece will come later.
Understand that. My mistake. So this is, this is item six.
Yep. So when we opened bids, we did not, we didn't approve the low bid at that time. And I said I would come back at a later time.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Mojo.
Justin, thanks for taking this back and having conversations. And, and really, it's from my understanding that Mindott did, did bring more money to the table, so we were able to get this done. And, and subsequently, obviously, the city of Fargo needed to do that as well. So thank you for going out and having those conversations so that we could get this done. I will then make a motion to approve the low bid from Redstone Construction.
No, second.
Motion by Commissioner, Commissioner Mojo, seconded by Commissioner Kravenhoff. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate with aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay, that passes. Next up is approval for the 2023 sign order.
Yes, so I'm requesting approval to move forward with a quote from M&amp;R Sign Company. So this is your three of four of replacing the blue 911 fire number signs throughout the county. This project's gone really well so far, and after this year, we'll only have two townships left, so next year will go relatively quick. So the total of the quote is $24,916.03, and this is a budgeted item.
I'll move for its approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kravenhoff, seconded by Commissioner Campbell. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, passes. Next up is the approval of grant agreement and resolution 2023-06 for the bridge removal on CASA 1.
Yes, so this is the bridge bonding. So like anytime we receive bonding, there's a grant agreement and supporting resolution. So I'm just requesting approval of the agreement and supporting resolution. And that does show the increased funding from Mindott as well as, on one of the sheets, it does show Fargo's local match at $424,971.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Campbell.
I would, I would move resolution 2023-06 for SAP 014-601-007.
Motion by Commissioner Campbell.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mojo. Any other discussion?
Does that need to include the agreement too?
Yes.
My motion would reflect that as well.
Okay.
Second, I mean.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion indicate with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. We're a little bit ahead here.
Justin.
Want to take a break? Oh, okay. Item 10, Substance Use Crisis Center Financial Plan Update by County Administrator Steve Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As the board recalls, back in January 17, the commission received a design development progress update from Klein-McCarthy and also from Steve Gertz Construction. Through that process, we, we did get our first look at potential costs of B3. And then there were also some, some clarifications or further, further explanation of furniture fixtures and equipment, FFNE, through that project. And so in doing so, we identified a funding gap. And so our, our finance committee did meet here about a week ago. But just to kind of give the board a little bit of an update, back, back last year, this board approved moving forward on a $13.9 million estimate that was provided by Klein-McCarthy. At the time, the, the estimate or the funding mechanisms that we had in place were $7.5 million in ARPA dollars. We also had $5 million of the state grant. This board had approved delegating 1 million of our $1.9 million opioid settlement towards this, and we also utilized $500,000 of reserves. Again, in that first design, just a reminder, we did, we did not have the alternatives listed. That would have been the outside, outside seating area and a, and a additional parking space on the north side. And there was, even though Kathy McKay and Troy Omens had worked closely with the state, they'd indicated that the B3 were potentially not a requirement. We did not have that in there in June of 2022. About the schematic design, we had determined the state had come back and said we did need to have B3 factored into this project with the, with the alternates included, with a $227,000 B3 study, $27,000 to implement that study by Klein-McCarthy. But actually, no B3 costs were factored into that. The schematic design came in at 14.1 million. When, when we met on the, on the 17th, the final schematic design, again, came out at $15,379,000. That included B3 costs, updated FFNE, again, as part of the designs, generally, it has about a 3%, it has a 3% FFNE cost. Once we get to the final schematic design, we actually have the exact cost of what the needs are going to be for, for those different areas. And so we saw, saw that increase there. We're going to be getting our final design next Monday at our meeting. But again, as part of that meeting, this board identified about a 1.379 funding gap from what was initially approved and asked the finance committee to have some initial discussion on that. Again, we met on the 25th of January. We talked about some different, different ways that the additional costs could be addressed. But this morning, before, we were here for a request of looking at the potential of utilizing a reserve ARPA dollars. This board set aside $1 million of, of our total allocation for future COVID pandemic issues. And just as a reminder, the funding that we received has to be obligated by December of 2024 and expended by December 31 of 2026. We had Kathy McKay present at our meeting and has had discussion on this. And the recommendation that came out of the finance committee would be that we would allocate or request the board to allocate an additional $750,000 of that $1 million of reserve to fill the portion of that financial gap. This would still remain, allow us to have $250,000 in that reserve fund in the event that Kathy and public health needed to respond to, to a flare-up in the COVID pandemic. It would also, we also have another $149,650 remaining. I think you can see that in the handout that you provided, providing roughly, roughly $400,000 remaining in that to, to respond to any needs moving forward. And so just to kind of give the board the timeline of this project of what we're trying to do, again, getting this out to bid as early as we can, we know that that will more, more than likely get better, better bid prices. And so this is what we are, the timeline that we're looking at next week will be before this board requesting permission to bid the project. Again, that does not mean that you're, you're going forward with the project. It just gives, gives us that final, final number. On the 20th of, of the, of the month, we'll put out the announcement that the bids are going to be coming out. On the 23rd, the documents will be available for vendors. The total bid packages are due on March 16, with March 28 coming before this board for, for final approval. And again, as we've talked about, this is, there's a 1.379 gap. This would be looking to address about $750,000 of that. Once bids are received, we would then, as a financial, have a financial funding plan to, to make sure that we covered that. So with that, I would yield for any questions and, and board, board action.
Yeah, I don't have any questions, Steve. That was a very good recap of our, of our meeting. I, I would like to, to address the, so the, we originally had placed that $1 million set aside of ARPA funds in the public health spectrum for future, just because we were uncertain. Kathy McKay is quite confident now that that, taking that 750 from there would be okay to use at this stage and where COVID is today. So I, you know, so we certainly supported that effort. That still leaves roughly, you know, roughly $650,000 that, that we don't have planned for. But one of the other things that we did talk about, when you look at the original document from Gertz, there was, there was two different.
Contingencies?
Contingencies, thank you, Steve. And, and he's, they're quite confident that once the final numbers came in, those higher percentages in those contingencies will also drop. So, which, which means that would reduce their, the scope of the project. We've also talked about in the event that that didn't happen, where that additional money would come from. And, and, you know, I specifically asked Lori, you know, during our meeting, and she felt very comfortable that if we had to upfront that, you know, through reserves, that we could. And, and, and the same with, there's another component in this whole financial deal, and that's the opioid money. And some of that opioid money, we're not entirely certain year to year exactly what those numbers are going to bring that could apply towards this, this construction project. But in the event that that would fall short, you know, Lori felt confident too that, that we would be able to upfront that money on behalf of the county for that, that share that we're talking about. Now, keep in mind, I think that was, the opioid number was about a million.
1.9.
And, and we've already received.
About 400,000.
Yeah, so, so over the remainder of the time, if that, if that money were to fall short on the annual basis, we're going to still get the full one, but it's just a matter of we're not sure when. And so if, if there's a year we don't get what we anticipated, you know, we can still cover that. Lori's confident we could cover that, and then it would be reimbursed back to our, our reserves once we got that money, that opioid settlement money. So I think it's, it's probably as good as we're going to get right now in terms of financial plan. And, and the goal, I think, that we've, Commissioner Mojo and I have certainly worked on is that we would like to see this done without any additional levy costs associated with it. So far, we're, we're, we're on track of being able to do that, so. Commissioner Mojo, if you want to add any more to that.
No, I think you recapped it quite well. You know, obviously, we've been cautious to save those dollars in case they're needed. And I think we wouldn't be making this recommendation without our public health directors signing off on it.
And the, the other component of this, of course, what we're talking about here is the construction of it. And obviously, once you go from a 16-bed facility to a 32-bed facility, you're going to have some increased operational costs and those types of things. And that, that is a separate subject that we're going to continue to have. But we've also, we're also aware that with that, there's going to become additional revenues that are going to come in, that are going to help offset some of those additional costs. And we've actually already, as a board, we've, we've approved some staffing increases already in preparation for this. So, and those incorporated new revenues that are coming in as well, so. So I think we have a pretty solid plan right now. So with that, Mr. Chair, I would move that we, we would commit another 750,000 of the $1 million ARPA reserves towards the construction of the substance abuse facility.
Second the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Campbell, seconded by Commissioner Mojo, direct $750,000 in ARPA funding to the Substance Use Crisis Center financial liability or costs there. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion indicate with aye.
Aye.
Same sign, all opposed? Passes.
Mr. Chair, if I could just further comment on, on Commissioner Campbell's point of, on the opioid funding. We've mentioned over the last couple of board meetings that there have been some additional settlements that, that have come, that have been taken care of in the last month or so. And we will be getting additional. And we will be getting additional, additional dollars from that, that also not necessarily specifically for this, but just in general that the board will be needing to take some action on here prior to April.
Okay, thank you. We do have, and this is an important priority, I understand that, but we've got a lot of issues involving the opioid and the drug addiction problem in our community. And there are some other needs. This is pressing, and it's essential that we get this underway in a timely manner, as anybody who's building anything now understands. But again, there are other pressing issues that would be good to have some funds to Anybody have any other comments? Item nine on the agenda, union contract approval. We have Anna Moore from HR. Anna?
Good morning. All right, so today I have the two contracts. I have the Highway Department and Detox. Both unions have agreed to the proposed contract, but it is needing your approval. Both unions have agreed to the 4% COLA for 2023, three-year contracts going for '23 through '25, adding Juneteenth and a half-day Christmas Eve. That's been approved for other contracts and employees. They do have the ability to use their vacation and sick leave as accrued. That was one thing that was discussed and approved in the contract, as well as shortening the grid from two-year steps to one-year steps in 2024, and then a market study in 2024 with implementation in 2025. With that, I'll, any questions?
Any questions?
So I do, so because these have, these contracts are coming in after the first of the year, not only will we have to approve these contracts, but we also have to have the discussion if we're going to be willing to go back to January 1 for the implementation of the 4% COLA. Is that correct?
Correct, yes. So I apologize for not mentioning that initially. With the approval for the 2023 through 2025 contract, we would be proposing a retroactive date of January 1, and then HR and payroll issuing retro pay for any missed wages.
Okay, thank you. I would move approval of the recommendation to approve the two contracts.
A little clarity on this. Is this for the Highway and also you said Detox?
That's correct. There's two contracts, Detox and Highway.
Right.
A motion by Commissioner Campbell, second by Commissioner Kravenhoff. Any further discussion?
I have one additional item. We do still have one contract open. Oh, I'm sorry, was there another question first? We have one additional contract open, that will be our social workers. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Any further questions from commissioners? If not, all in favor of the motion indicate with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Go ahead, Anna.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt there. We do have one additional contract open, our social workers. They are the only remaining contract that has not been agreed upon. We are going to mediation with them on March 7.
Anything additional? Thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
Steve, you're back up with the Fargo-Moorhead Diversion Project Funding Committee status update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you are all certainly well aware of, this past August, we went from a portion, still a portion of planning of the diversion project to all in on the construction phase. And part of the original plan through, for the diversion, there's both a Minnesota ask and a North Dakota ask as part of the project. And so we've been successful both in county and the city of Moorhead in securing some funds, but there are some additional projects mitigating, mitigated projects that need to be completed. And so we wanted to have a discussion here today in those remaining projects and have some discussion on that. With that, I turn it over to Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you, Steve. So when, as part of our agreement to join the diversion authority, one of the stipulations that we agreed to was to lobby on behalf of the Minnesota side for funds from the state of Minnesota for this project. And so over the time, we've been doing that, and there was, there was a kind of a commitment on our part. And if you have your packet there, if you were to look at the bonding requests, I'm showing it here as page 69 of 70. But if you'll, if you'll notice, it's broken down into bonding requests by the city of Moorhead, and all of those, all of those items are projects within the boundaries of the city of Moorhead. And those totaled $24 million. And the good news on that front right now is, is it is in the governor's bonding bill, that full $24 million for those projects is, projects are in there. If that were to be successful, the really, the only leftover ask on the state of Minnesota to fulfill, our requirement is to lobby for. Whether we're successful or not is another story, but we're fulfilling our obligation by, by at least going and talking about this. And so you can see that there's an additional $36.2 million worth of projects in Clay County, in rural Clay County, that can extend all the way down to the border. And they're pretty self-explanatory, and you can see the largest number, of course, is $15 million for upstream mitigation and property, area property acquisitions and relocations. Those are important dollars for us. We need those. We want to make sure, as we talked about earlier on in this, we want to make sure that we, we have the adequate funds to pay our, our property owners who are asking to give up their property. We want to be able to have the funds to pay them an adequate price for their property. So right now, we haven't, we haven't formally submitted the Clay County portion to the legislature. And, you know, I know it's a little late in the game right now for this year, but I still think it would be in our best interest to, to get this out to our local legislatures and the state and the state bonding committee and anybody else involved that shows what our needs are in the event that they decide that they're going to try to do some additional projects this year because of the funding that they have available. We should be, we should be doing this. And by the way, this took some considerable discussion amongst the city of Moorhead and Clay County in determining and developing what things we should be asking for and what things probably are not within our boundaries to be asking for. And so, so this number is, it's, these items have been agreed upon, for example, by Bob Zerman, Dr. Zerman. He believes they're all accurate numbers from the city of Moorhead Engineering, and he's very well-respected at the state level. So we brought this here today because we, we think that the action should start with this board in moving forward on, on making a request. We have also, we also understand that the state of Minnesota, you know, that not always do we get everything that we're looking for. And from a prioritizing standpoint, we have agreed in the past that those Moorhead projects were up on the list. And now that those are there, and they're going to, they're in the, in the process that we should be working on, on the remainder of this, which is coming up all within the next two or three years where we're going to need all these, all these dollars, so, or two to four years, I would say, so. So we wanted that put on the, on the agenda for some discussion. I think this would be an appropriate document for us to take with us when we go to the legislative conference coming up to give to our local legislators. But I'd like to see this somehow get out ahead of time. And I don't know if there can be additional, if there's avenues for additional requests that come at this stage in the legislative process, that if so, we should, we should certainly try to take advantage of that opportunity. So I know, Paul, you've been involved with legislative stuff for a long time and your other jobs. And if you have some ideas on ways to do this too, I think that would be nice to hear, so.
So a question for you, you know, just being, coming into these, for me, seeing the 36.2 as we move ahead, is that, is that all, in the past when this has come in, or like to Moorhead, are these, are these coming from general fund right now? Or is these, are these, because I'm assuming some of this might be bonding down the road?
Yeah, so, so Commissioner Kravenoff, the, probably our, our best likelihood and probably our only likelihood from the state of Minnesota is through bonding for any of these projects.
Okay.
The fact, the fact of the matter is, is right now, if some of these things are, need to be done prior to this being done, it is still the diversion authority's responsibility to pay for it. So that, you know, so that still is ultimately there. But, but it's our responsibility, as part of our agreement with the diversion authority, is to try, is to try to obtain the necessary funding for Minnesota projects in it, so.
That's helpful. So again, the timeframe, I mean, I fully support, let's get, get it going.
Right.
The bonding year will be coming next year.
Right.
Right? But the one I kind of have a little question about is, where do we sit on, and Commissioner Mojo, you may have a little more on this too, where do we sit with the dollars for the work being done in Georgetown? Do we know?
Well, I...
I know, I know that works ahead of us coming soon, right?
Well, I guess that maybe leads into my question, because it said that it was, if you go by this document, those are one of the two projects that are being led by the Buffalo Red watershed district. So, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure I've not been part of those discussions.
Okay. But when I was on that as manager, I mean, that conversation kept coming up.
Right.
And I was being assumptions of that those monies were already there, but perhaps I'm wrong.
Well, and that's, you know, I think what this document shows is this shows the total amount of funds that, that are going to be needed in rural Clay County to finish this project. That's the 36.2 million. If you'll, if you'll notice, both the Georgetown Levy Project and the Wolverton Project, they're bullet pointed there, an asterisk there, that states that they're being led by the Buffalo Red River watershed district. So, so if, if the Buffalo Red is, already got those in their request, and that would be, we'd be looking at $12 million, that would reduce Clay County's 36.2 to 24.2 million. But the whole idea is, is we don't want, as a group, we don't want to see anything left out in terms of the request. And I don't know, you know, the Buffalo Red River watershed district, they might be looking at different components on, on how their request is being done for the, for the Georgetown project, because, for example, a significant portion of the Georgetown project would be a road raise on Highway 75. So we don't know if they're going to be going after highway construction dollars in their, you have a better idea on that than I do, but...
Yeah, well, they're all in discussion, everything's, the plans are laid out or whatever. So I don't want to get too deep on the, on that one, but I just bring that up to know that they're, they're active as we speak.
Yeah.
And I certainly would encourage, you know, we get going on what we can for this legislative session.
Commissioner Mojo?
Thank you. I just had a question in regards to the paragraph on page 69, the bonding requests. At the bottom, it says, "These project requests are prioritized, with Clay County supporting the higher priority rankings for the city of Moorhead projects." I don't see a ranking system on here, and, you know, certainly don't want to imply that we feel that any of these are more of a priority.
Well, so in terms of the city of Moorhead, they probably have theirs ranked from top to bottom, from the $7 million down to the $2 million. Those are prioritized within the city of Moorheads. At the same point in time, ours are, the Clay County ones are probably tied to the timing of when they would need it to be done. That's probably why, for example, the cemetery mitigation, those things are up there, because they might be needed prior to some of the other stuff that's being done. Obviously, the complete mitigation and property relocations, that's something that's going to be going on for the next four or five years, so.
I agree. I guess my, my comment was that that's not necessarily clear in how that reads.
Further discussion?
Well, I, I'll just comment, I had served, as noted several times before, with Governor Burgum and Governor Dayton on the task force that really looked to how we could find an amicable solution to dealing with this issue. And I know the, the issue regarding funding has come up in many different arenas, always talking about Minnesota share and North Dakota share, and where is the money coming from? And certainly could argue Minnesota has done a lot, spending almost $84 million to put in measures to protect the Minnesota residents. Certainly feel, for me, to see almost $20 million in this request that will go to mitigating cemeteries and landowners in Clay County, that has been one of the, the biggest issues that I've dealt with, with those residents while serving in this capacity and making sure that we're doing our best to secure dollars to help, help them, is how I can support this.
Just an observation on this, we have, since coming here two years ago and getting with, on diversion authority, the conversation has happened repeatedly, and I've done it with, or had those conversations with Commissioner Campbell present, that we've got to lobby, and we've got to get the Minnesota share out of the legislature. And I think the obvious way to do that is bonding. Was a real eye-opener yesterday, we'll have reports here in a little bit, but anybody that did the AMC Legislative Update meeting, it was very interesting how fast things are moving and how everybody is saying it's a different world than it's been. And I think we're going to be stepping into that world when we go up in a couple of weeks. And it's, I think it's a very important thing that we be prepared to state our case on this. I agree with Commissioner Mojo on the, if there's an implication, that there's priorities here, but Moorhead got, has gotten in there, and they've, they've stated their case, and they've made that case. And I think that's why they got in the governor's bill. And I think we need to get up there and be very vocal about the needs rural Clay County has and get in line to get those, those needs met with bonding. Any other discussion? We need an action on this, Ken?
Well, I, you know, I, I just, I think it would be nice to have these documents submitted. I don't know if we could maybe ask our administrator on behalf of the board to send these to, I don't know, me, I'm Steve, I'm looking to you for some advice maybe on, on who this should go. Obviously, we want to give it to our local legislatures in Clay County, but at the same point in time, we probably have bonding chairs in the governor.
DNR, I think, could also be important to get to.
DNR, yeah. So I would, I would, I would move that we have Mr. Larson submit a, a letter that, that shows the mitigation needs for Clay County on this extremely important regional project. And the... regional project and the state funding sources that will be needed to finish this project.
I'll second that.
Motion from Commissioner Campbell, second by Commissioner Kravenhoff. Any further discussion?
I'm hoping for amendments on it, too. I'm just, I'm just kind of looking for.
Well, I think, I think the individuals you've highlighted are important. We, you know, agree. I, I'm concerned on the timing of it. Things are happening really fast, but making sure that this is out there, making sure that as we're having those conversations, it's not just a City of Morehead, this, this is one project. So, to look at this and see the City of Morehead request and then the city, or the Clay County request, it makes it look as it's two separate projects. It really needs to be a holistic request. And I would also say, I know the, the chamber has Day at the Hill coming up, making sure that, that our partners over there are aware of these letters so they can continue to advocate for it.
I, I think that's, those are really good comments, and I would, I would, you know, Steve, maybe if in this letter that you could, maybe as a, a additional way of information for, you know, all the legislatures who would be involved with this, that, that, that these, both of these are two parts to one total project, that they're both needed. And, you know, obviously, we're thankful that there's, the city's share is in the governor's bonding bill, but we still have that remainder to finish out the total project. I, I do like her comments here, so if we could incorporate that, it would be awesome.
Further discussion?
And the part of this chamber, too. I think, I think we should even send this to the chamber as well to.
Okay, if not, we have motion, all in favor indicate with aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes. Steve, do you have any questions, you need anything clarified?
I do not at this time, Mr. Chair.
Okay. And you're up next with Clay County Extension Committee Annual Appointments.
Yeah, my final item today is the appointment of, of our nine members to the Clay County Extension Committee. Minnesota statute 3836 dictates that in addition to our appointments at the beginning every, beginning of each year, that, that our county must designate nine employees, three of those are two commissioners and our county auditor, and then six at, six at-large members. And so, you'll see below, this will come before you or comes before you annually, but we have eight people listed below. Extension is going to be bringing forth a ninth candidate at their March meeting. We have these staggered between three, three and two-year terms from the standpoint that moving forward, we'll, they'll all be three years, but we wanted to make sure that we identified, so we wouldn't be looking to replace everyone in the same year. And so, with that, I would yield for any questions.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Mojo.
I had the opportunity to attend a state extension committee meeting a little over a week ago and was able to meet with all the regional directors within Minnesota, and it appears that Clay County has, has not been doing this the way that all the other counties have been doing it in, in regards to appointing. It's, it's my understanding that we, after this today, will continue to make appointments similar to how we've advertised and made appointments for the watershed districts, and so that any recommendation would come to this board for approval. And I think the, the best, the best thing that can come out of that is that we continue to elevate extensions so that people are aware of what's going on and the work that they're doing. These are great, great folks that have continued to offer great input. Some of the two-year terms, for instance, are those that are taking over for a full three-year term, a replacement, so that at the mid-March meeting, we will be looking for another individual to help serve in this capacity. So, we'll make sure, and, and if you know anyone that would be a great fit, spread the word. Another point that Clay County has not necessarily done in the past, but think it would be really relevant and important, is to have youth members attend these meetings. I know that the timing of the meetings has not been conducive to having youth participation, but think that that's something that we should bring forth for discussion going forward, having not only 4-H members, but, you know, young master gardener kiddos that are interested in that, taking part. I can yield for any questions if anyone has.
Just a point of clarification, so, it was said that this would come before the board every year. The fact of the matter is, it'll come before the board every year that a term ends, because, because if we approve this today, there would be no term that would end next year, so there would be no.
Sure.
Right?
Correct.
I just, just want that clarification.
We, we just have to, yeah, by, by statute, we have to identify them each year, and so we appreciate Commissioner Mojo bringing that forward and reviewing our, as she mentioned, and reviewing, reviewing our past documents throughout the last few decades, we have not done this in this fashion.
But, but what we're doing here is we're, for, for example, the very first one on here is Commissioner Mojo's on a three-year term, so is her, her three-year term now starting January of 2023?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. So, there wouldn't be a need to reappoint?
Well, I think there would be, because it has been, there has been some frequent turnover in other areas, so I think that at the first of the year, similar to what, how we do our committee assignments, as long as there's not a new appointment, we would just agree with the.
My, my understanding is how other counties handle it is, they have a consent agenda, that if there's no changes, they would, they would just identify that in, in our first meeting of the year.
The point I'm making is if we give somebody a three-year term, they get a three-year term.
Right, correct.
It's not, you know, they're, they're not subject to change every year.
Correct.
Right?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion?
I would, I would move that we appoint the Clay County Extension Committee members as listed above.
Okay.
Motion by Commissioner Campbell, second by Commissioner Kravenhoff. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, committee reports. We start with you, Commissioner Kravenhoff.
My report begins going back to January 24th, starting on, on that date, and there was, I had a meeting with the Substance Abuse Committee, along with Commissioner Ebinger. We continue working with public health to have a discussion about, again, opioid, and I know that discussion, and I know a lot of attention comes to fentanyl, but yet, at the same time, opioids are opioids, so that, that have been around for a long time, so, but the opioid settlement has brought a newer discussion or a update to it. So, we strategize to come together with groups that are involved toward that, that problem as it may, or as it exists in, in Clay County. And with that, we've, the committee met on the 24th, and again, staff to the same subject met on, let's see, just recently, on February 3rd. And one was outreach to what the Red River Recovery Initiative involved, those people involved in that, so included in that discussion was not only public health staff, but also Lotus, how they were dealing with crisis overdoses and what can be done to, you know, make sure that we're minimizing and helping those as those overdoses happen as quickly and successfully as we can to minimize our deaths to that. The later one was a discussion on the 3rd, was again, internal discussion, but it was, I thought, excellent conversation, again, more identifying where Clay County fits and the needs that maybe needed to be filled in this discussion. And present was people from public health, from detox, mental health, excuse me, I think I said that, then also our new deputy sheriff, Chris Martin, and then our county attorney, Brian Milton. Anyway, I thought it was very good. At this point, we'll wait to hear from staff as they collect, you know, their, their, their thoughts and, together and bring them forward, and then at some point, that'll be elevated as a, a greater discussion of the full board. Okay? Also, Commissioner Mojo can talk a little more to this, but I had, on the 25th, I was not part of the meeting, I was at my commissioner training, but CAP LP had put an application in to be on their board, and that was accepted, so I'm a new board member to that. Then, on the January 25th, 26th, 27th, I was part of a commissioner training 101 in St. Paul. It was a very good gathering. There was almost 100 new commissioners in the state, 87 counties, and anyway, over that three-day period, presentations about what Association Minnesota counties do, general government's training that we had, we had even Commissioner Mojo came to our, to our session on the second day and talking about balance of life with being a commissioner.
Any suggestions?
An example, an example to follow. So, anyway, she has four more kids to watch after than I do right now, so, anyway, we all have our different balances. But anyway, and then we got into county budgeting, talked, we had presentations by the MCIT, the Minnesota Counties Environmental, or Intergovernmental Trust, and, and I made a special point to get to know our commissioners, newly elected ones that were there, those that perhaps we may be working with and share responsibilities with, with, there were two commissioners, new out of Becker County, one out of Otter Tail, one out of Wilkin, and we met quite a few times, so always good to become familiar with them, a little networking going on. Then, let's see, I was, the 31st, I was very happy to be part of the gathering we had for the oath office for Deputy Sheriff Chris Martin. I know there were a couple other awards given to other people in the Sheriff's Department, and I'll let someone else talk about those, but just knowing Chris's background and then also just him sharing the other day in our meeting with substance abuse, he brings a lot of talent and background with him. On the Thursday, the 2nd of February, I had another meeting with the Children's Mental Health, they continue work, getting out the survey, which they do every year, trying to find gaps in ways of the groups, the nonprofits, and what the counties bring with it to them, and making sure we aren't admitting, meeting, or, excuse me, finding any gaps in, in our system, so that we can improve upon those things, whether it be through county work, counseling that goes through the nonprofits or, or through our school system. So, I thought that, very good. Last, last was, I had had my first board meeting back on the 18th for the historical, cultural and society of Clay County. Yesterday, I had a very good orientation with Maureen Johnson, and, and we had a couple hours over there, it was very, very good, and got a lot more background about what they do, where, what exists over there, and always encourage people to go over and to the Umpcom Center and see what's on display. So, I saw the pictures that their new exhibit right now of Morehead, 1873 through 1969, so I enjoy those photos in the background, so go with it. And then last, if you kind of, I want to bring this up, this was honored to be asked, so, former representative, former Senator Kent Eakin forwarded my name to the, to the governor to be on what's called the Legislative Salary Council, and I submitted an application to that upon his request to do so, and I was selected. So, I'm going to be one of eight people on this council, bipartisan, equal for Democrats, for Republicans, and we will, starting tomorrow, February 8th, we'll have our first meeting, there are going to be three meetings. This council will meet this year, the odd year 23, we will meet again in the odd year 25, and we will, as prescribed by statute, setting the legislative salaries, and we have to have that job done by March 31st. So, it's a short-term thing, but I, I do want to say, just very honored to be part of this and the opportunity to help in that decision. Along the way, however, I'm unable to have any contact with any legislators, so I want to make sure the public knows that. So, our discussion probably, as we were just talking about, what's our diversion money or cap, I'll be able to talk about those things after March 31st, but at this point, I will remain silent. So, that doesn't mean I can't bring forward ideas, I just can't talk to them, so. And that's what I have for my reports.
Thank you. Commissioner Mojo?
I just maybe want to comment on that. Congratulations, Commissioner Kravenoff, that's a great honor. Is there any action that this board needs to do to allow those conversations or take action on any of that?
I, I don't believe so. I don't, maybe it can fall to you, when you were on the governor's task force, did the board take action at that point?
They, they did take an action on that point. And I guess to follow suit, I, I don't know how we officially then word that, but I just would maybe move to reiterate the appointment that's already been made, so the, the commission officially recognizes it.
Is that a motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second that, just with a clarification, I, I'm not, I don't believe that this should be a, you know, Paul's willing to do this, but I don't believe that this should be a per diem.
No, and that, nor was my appointment with the task force.
I just wanted to make sure that, that, that this is something that, I, I too want to congratulate Paul for that, but I don't, I don't think because of what he's doing, there should be a per diem involved with it.
Yeah, all per diem expenses are paid by the state.
We have motion on floor. Any further discussion on it? It was from Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Campbell. All in favor indicate with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Passes, and, and congratulations, Commissioner Kravenoff.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, should I do my report?
Proceed.
Okay, thank you. Two weeks of meetings, going back to the 24th of January, I participated in a meeting with our county engineer and MinDOT and our administrator and Commissioner Campbell in regards to a discussion surrounding the 11th Street underpass proposal. There, by nature, will potentially generate some contaminated material. The discussion was to discuss if there was a site in Clay County that could handle that. I think we weighed out that certainly it's not. I think we weighed out that certainly it's not an appropriate storage at the landfill, but maybe identified some other areas that that could potentially happen. It would come at a significant cost reduction to the project, potentially a revenue source for the county. The next day, I attended the Prairie Lakes meeting. That meeting did have a lot of new members, and I'll let Commissioner Campbell, who was there in person, report on that. We did appoint a new chair, Lee Rogness from Otter Tail will serve as the chair. Commissioner Campbell has really served as chair in such a great capacity, so thank you, Kevin, for your work there. You really have helped that organization. Certainly, there's some big discussions that are happening surrounding legislation and potential consequences that will happen to that facility from that, and more to come, I guess. That afternoon, I attended the Finance Committee meeting. We discussed the item that this board has already taken action on, right? That's what we talked about?
Yes.
Just one issue there? So thank you for this support, this board's support in the ARBA funding going to help the overruns that were projected with the detox facility. As already noted, I did have the opportunity to travel to St. Paul to present at the new commissioner panel. Really happy that Commissioner Kravenoff had the opportunity to attend that. That is, remained a source of really knowledge for me over the years. They cover so many different areas with that, with the training, but particularly the new commissioner panel that I participated with was balance, and we can all joke at what is the magic answer to balancing this, but everyone in all walks of life has different areas that they have to balance to do the work. And so I appreciate this board's support for all of us as we continue to balance all that life throws at us while we do this job. That afternoon, as noted, I was invited to attend the AMC Extension Committee meeting at the St. Paul University campus with all the nine regional directors. Really an opportunity for us to discuss with those regional directors on relationships with county boards and administration and the regional offices and the value that the offices bring to the areas in which they are, but how we can continue to collaborate and lift the work in a better way. That afternoon, on the drive home, I attended a virtual meeting of Lakes and Prairies Board. Congratulations to Commissioner Kravenoff, who was appointed to be serving that capacity as well. I had a long discussion about our bylaws and making sure that we're addressing the needs as the organization and the boards continue to change. We will make a recommendation for action to that board next month. Did have a lot of grant approvals, and there's, in the process of writing for a lot of grants, that organization really does a great job at that. So thank you to staff for continuing to look for funding. Friday, attended the MCC JPA meeting. We did have property acquisition status reports and appraisal reports. Talked a little bit about land management and spring flood prep discussions and farmland leases. I know that is something that I've had residents reach out to me about. That continues to be something that we're doing to make sure that a local entity can take care of the land and until it's, until we're able to either discuss different agreements in regards to buyouts or dispersment of the land if needed. We did have a couple amendments. The MCC JPA ordered, task orders with PIFERS and Crown that also was approved. That afternoon, I attended the county-owned property committee. We did discuss the vegetation land management lease for Elkton Township going forward and finding further ways to maybe partner with other organizations on the care of some of the land that we have, particularly if there's any other opportunities for a pollinator habitat venture with pheasants forever, like we did with the Crestwood property. We did talk a little bit about the county forest, is that the correct name, on Highway 10, and potential uses for that going forward. I think that concludes that report. And then, on the 30th, I attended the substance use crisis facility discussion and construction designing. That was a marathon meeting. Thank you to staff for bringing forward the items that we need to talk about. If you want to talk about doors or hardwares or windows, I think we covered in that. That said, I think we're getting to a really great package for this board to discuss and potentially approve. I really hope you do, because as Commissioner Evinger stated, that is a huge need in the community. I also attended the swearing-in of the new chief deputy, deputy, or chief deputy Martin. Really excited about his presence in the department. I know he brings a wealth of knowledge and service from our entire county to the department, so excited about that. Also want to publicly thank Chief Deputy Lansum. Boy, Steve has just been a rock star. He's really been at a lot of meetings and helped us formulate a lot of plans and has been a presence of service for Clay County. So thank you so much, Steve, for all that you've done. It was nice to see him sitting next to the old Chief Deputy Ciro as well. Matt was on Chief Deputy when I was started in this role, so I know that they all have served the department well. That afternoon, I was able to attend the transfer station tours and presentation to the community. Boy, that is a teamwork, really got us to that point, and it was really nice to see all the different folks that have had the opportunity to weigh in on the design and implementation and now completion of that project. That really has been a heavy lift that a lot of people have teamed up to build. So I unfortunately was not able to attend the actual ceremony back to that balancing act. I was being a wrestling mom that afternoon, so I had to miss. But I do want to thank, before I had the opportunity to join the SWAC committee, I know that Commissioner Campbell and before Commissioner Wayland, Commissioner Everett, those three commissioners really helped elevate the need and advocate for it. I know that Kirk Rosenberger helped us advocate for the funding. Again, like I said earlier, so many individuals helped us get to that point, so thank you, thank you, thank you. The next day, I attended a conversation with Senator Kupac that was brought forward by the Morehead Business Association. It was an opportunity for us to talk about Senate File 2 that has some pretty big requirements in regards to paid leave, and I think it's important that we, not only, I think we support the need for that, but there are some contingencies, amendments that would be potentially valuable to Clay County and particularly us as a border city, county, community, making sure that those voices and concerns are heard for that Senate file. I know that I had forwarded an invitation from Shannon Full from the chamber to have a conversation with Senator Kupac on Friday in regards to that. Clay County is also an employer, and so there are some major issues that this Senate file could pose for Clay County, so I think it's important that Senator Kupac hears that. So I am hopeful that you can attend that. I think it would be wise, I know that we're already at Tuesday in the week, but since the media has been notified of this, I think it would be wise for us to post that meeting. The location is the Comst on Friday, so if the board nods yes, that that would probably be something Jackie can do. And then, my final committee report is, yesterday, I attended the MetroCog Executive Committee meeting. Good discussion. We did renew the insurance policy with Marsha McLennan. We did approve a grant award for $200,000 for the SS4A grant, and talked about the process for reviewing the executive director candidates. Those applications have closed, and we are moving forward with the structure for interviewing and the selection of the finalists. So more to come on that, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you. I just want to piggyback. Firstly, I also attended the meeting on the 24th with the folks from MinDOT and our county engineer regarding the 11th Street construction project and the contaminated soil that's part of that project. And it's really even more than just the contaminated soil. It's about the 150,000 cubic yards of total material that has to be removed for that project. Of the 150,000, I think 50,000 of it, I think, has roughly been determined to be somewhat contaminated, and there's different levels of contamination, whether it goes from green to yellow to red, depending on the significance there. But one of the things, Commissioner Mojo, that you also mentioned is that you had a meeting with your county-owned property group, and I'm just wondering if, maybe going back, and maybe this wasn't really a topic at the time that was available for it, but I know Matt Jacobson has, did join that meeting with us when we were dealing with MinDOT and looking at potential other sites for some of that material to go. And the reason we're even talking about this is that that project has really escalated in price, and, you know, about $10 million of that escalation in price is due to these, having to truck these materials so far away. And so anything that we could do that could potentially reduce that length of trucking and moving of that material helps that overall cost of total project, too. And could it mean then a potential revenue source for the county? That remains to be seen, but we are a financial, we're financially obligated to that project, and it makes sense for us to do our part. So I don't know, Commissioner Mojo, if you could, you know, I don't know how often that group meets, but I think it would be good to at least research some of those potential options and how that might, how that might work with our planning and zoning regulations and those types of things that would come into play. So that would be awesome if you could do that.
Yes, I can connect with Matt.
Thank you. Then on the 25th, we did have a Prairie Lakes Solid Waste Committee meeting, and I think Commissioner Mojo did report on that. The only thing that I do want to add to that, because it's kind of exciting news, is for the first time in the history of our being members of this and probably since its inception, that they'd had revenues over expenditures within that facility of, and it was 497,000, almost $500,000 revenues over expenditures. Keep in mind that in the past, that thing had been so far in the negative that Otter Tail County had basically, they had been financing that shortage. And so what we as a board did is we incorporated $1 of the increase in our tipping fees on an annual basis would go to pay Otter Tail County back. So that becomes a line item within the budget. And in addition to that, we also agreed that if we had revenues over expenditures, that half of those revenues over expenditures would go, would be paid directly to Otter Tail County until we fulfill that debt obligation that they have. And so it's kind of nice to see that, in addition to the 150,000 that we, roughly 150,000 that we had scheduled to pay them back, that we're going to be able to pay them back another 250,000. So that's kind of exciting news on that, on that front, that that facility has really turned itself around financially. Then, the same day, we did have the Finance Committee meeting regarding the substance abuse facility, and the majority of that, focus of that was to discuss the increased cost at $1.3 million that Administrator Larson showed us this morning based on its original presentation. And I think we're confident, based on the actions that this board took today and these numbers, well, we won't know till, when does the bid come in? April, early April?
End of March.
End of March. So the end of March, we'll kind of have a clearer understanding, but based on, you know, there seems to be a level of confidence from Gertz Construction and others that these numbers we got are pretty decent, so. Then on Thursday, the 20, excuse me, the 26th, we had our Solid Waste Advisory Committee. We had our first committee meeting at the new facility. At that time, there was a little lack of heat. We were still running, things weren't quite ready yet, and we were convenienced with being able to have outside bathrooms as part of our meeting, which was a little unique in itself, but all those things are now done and complete, and it's operating well. And we received reports from construction engineers and landfill activities from Brett Rice, and Cory Bang gave us an update on solid waste updates in general, so. That day, we also had the Clay County Joint Powers Board in regards to the diversion authority, and Commissioner Mojo gave a very good recap of that, so I won't go into that any further. We also, that day, had a diversion authority board meeting, and that was a pretty standard Mayor Mahoney took over as board chair on that, and there was...
I can...
Okay, you want, okay.
I can go ahead and do this.
No, I'll let Commissioner Evinger complete that, that one. And then, on the 30th, we had a substance abuse design and construction meeting. Commissioner Mojo also talked about that. And one of the, one of the things that we will be seeing coming forward is Joe Olson had established a new FFNE number. And so in some of our discussions in this project, there's probably going to be some of the FFNE dollars that are going to be switched to FFNE into the construction project. They're going to go from FFNE to Gertz's. So what we might see coming up is that there will be an increased cost on the construction side of things, but a decrease in the FFNE. So they'll balance each other out, with the exception of, if anything that goes into the construction side, there is an administration fee that gets added to it. But based on, because those items are more electrical in design than anything else, that really shouldn't be in the FFNE, and they should be in the construction contract. So just to be aware of that, that there's going to, there could be those changes coming And then, then on the 31st, I also attended the swearing-in ceremony, and congratulations to our new chief deputy and to the two deputies who were honored for their, and I'm sorry, I don't have their names with me today, maybe Steve, you can do that, but for their outstanding work on some lifesaving type of deals. And then, and again, I want to agree with Commissioner Mojo, thanks to Chief Deputy Lansum for his many years of, you know, and I think when, when we as a board work with the Sheriff's Department when it comes to the, and the Sheriff's Department has a significant budget, and that's one thing I can say, is every sheriff that I've dealt with really doesn't have the best managerial skills when it comes to budgeting, and that's where they rely on their chief deputy, and we've had another good one. And that's, and that's a major part of what they do, is keeping track of that whole budget thing. And thank you to Chief Deputy Lansum for his good work in that regard. And then we also had the open house for the ribbon cutting, and I just want, boy, there was good attendance. Thank you to everybody involved with that. Thank you to everybody involved with that. And as of yesterday, that's up and running for the public. And there was a lot of trash talk that day. That concludes my report.
Thank you. My report, on the 24th, I attended the opioid discussion that Commissioner Kravenhoff has discussed. Just to reiterate, this is a problem we've got in this community. It's not going to get better. We've got to have resources to address it. I think public health's concept of working with groups within the community and forming partnerships and taking leadership position in that is a good one, but there needs to be some action on it. And I look forward to seeing what staff can bring forward as we progress through this. And we need to figure out what we can afford to fund and fund it. So this is going to be an ongoing project. And, you know, I think, having spent 40 years in law enforcement, it's one of those things, you don't ever think you're going to solve the problem, but you can make it better for individuals. And that's what I think we need to do in this community. On the 25th, I attended the Diversion Authority Finance Committee meeting. And I'm going to kind of merge this in with the meeting on the 26th, the Diversion Board of Authority. As Commissioner Campbell indicated, it was a fairly routine business meeting with the Board of Authority on the 26th. We did a couple of things. The Finance Committee simply endorses a lot of the action that they take, and they sent it on the Board for a vote. And that was the action that the Board itself took after having a couple of things we approved in finance, we forwarded in finance and approved in the Board, $3.5 million contract with Braun Interlock regarding testing during the development of the structures in the diversion. Had a couple of MOUs that were forwarded and approved, North Cass Water and Rush River Water District, some MOUs with them on their facilities there. And we had a painfully long, but kind of interesting in a wonky way, discussion about late failure insurance needs and the cost of attorneys in defending, should litigation ever take place. And there needs to be some way of covering those costs. And what was forwarded to the Board and approved is to go out and get some bids on this. And it will be, you know, a relatively modest cost when compared to what you'd pay an attorney or pay in any settlements, should there be any failure of these structures in years to come. So that was covered. And then I think that completes both the Diversion Authority Finance Meeting and the Diversion Board of Authority that we had on the 26th. On the 31st, I also attended the swearing-in for Chief Deputy Chris Martin. Chris was a patrolman detective and a sergeant while I was with Morehead Police Department. And he is one of the most experienced and great leaders that we've got in law enforcement in this community. And we were very lucky to get him. And as an old Morehead cop, it kind of makes me sad because he left a big hole in that department. But when I get on further in my report here, I'll talk about how that got filled. But getting him on board, as Commissioner Campbell said, this is somebody who takes care of the business, but he also has to be a leader of people who go out there and do the work. And Chris is certainly competent to do both, and it's good to have him on board. The awards that were given for life-saving and for helping Fargo with a homicide suspect that came over here and subsequently suicided, but the response that we had on that certainly lets you know how important our deputies out on the road are and what kind of work they do. We're grateful to them. On the 2nd of February, I attended the Greater Fargo-Morehead EDC. And basically, what we did for the majority of that meeting was reviewed the activity of the joint executive meeting we had with the EDC in Chamber on the 20th of January. And I covered that information in the last meeting, but a lot of it, just looking at the EDC's role in fueling our future, too, some of the workforce issues that have come up, and some of the North Dakota funding that's available, again, for workforce issues and the approach that's being taken over there. We also got to meet Joey Ness. He's the new Vice President of Business Development for the EDC. Sharp fellow, I think he's going to be a great addition to the team there. My notes are getting a little crowded here, two weeks. Later that day, on the 2nd, I attended the emergency, or virtually attended the Emergency Communication Legislative Committee. We discussed the public safety telecommunications training and certification legislations up right now to develop language for a board that would control telecommunications, very similar to the board you have for police officers and for fire with the state. And we looked at some legislation to where we can get more flexibility in the language for the State Emergency Communication Board to be able to spend funds on the armor system, which that's going to be a fairly big issue this legislative session, because there's a lot of components to armor that need to be funded, and it's going to have to be picked up by some smaller local jurisdictions that need some help with the funding. Let's see. On the 6th, I attended, virtually attended, the AMC Legislative Update. Won't go too wonky on this. A lot of this stuff is fairly interesting. They did a great job, AMC did, the staff there, of condensing what the priorities are in a one-hour presentation, and then picked up some questions. There's some movement right now with Health and Human Services on modernizing their systems. The Governor's put a lot of money in that in his proposed budget, and I think they're hopeful on that. The Clean Air Standards, which we've discussed here before, and Restoring Felony Voting has already passed. There's more things right now at this point. One of the commentators said it feels like march in the legislature. There's so much legislation that's blown through and is being voted on. We're going to have an interesting trip up there in a couple of weeks, just to see what our needs, how they're going to be addressed and met. Another thing I think is interesting is the duty disability. They're trying to get a coalition together before moving a bill, but we have a situation in the state of Minnesota where if an officer is diagnosed, police officer is diagnosed with PTSD, they can no longer serve. And I've had this discussion with a lot of veteran police officers. You cannot work as a police officer for 10 or 20 years and not have some experiences that cause some degree of post-traumatic stress disorder. And it is certainly treatable. It is certainly something that you can have a productive, happy life after you've learned to deal with it. It's not permanently disabling. And I have known scores of police officers who have dealt with their issues on PTSD and done it with professional help and maintained their job and maintained their career. And a diagnosis is not a reason for somebody to end their career. It's a reason for them to get help. And hopefully, we'll get some legislative to address what's a real disparity in Minnesota law. And it's a very difficult thing right now, with as difficult as it is to recruit law enforcement officers, to eliminate people from their ability to continue to serve unnecessarily. So that's an interesting piece of legislation I hope we can get through. And then later that day, on the 6th, I attended Morehead Police Department's swearing-in of seven new officers, men and women, good-looking group. Does my heart good to see that number of young, energetic people hitting the streets. We've got a former Spud wrestler. Muhammad was also a lineman on the football team on Spuds with Chief Monroe's son at the same time, so Shannon's known him for years. And I know the family, and they're good people. And everybody they introduced, they brought their family into it, and it just looks like a really solid group of people. Filling the gap, they had a promotion. And Detective Schultz, Nick Schultz is now Sergeant Schultz, which I'm sure he's going to enjoy being. But they promoted him, and he's filling the sergeant rank that Chris left open when he came over to the Sheriff's Department. And I've known Nick, worked with him when he was the FOP delegate, or the union delegate, I'm sorry, I'm reverting back to my little rock days. He's a sharp guy, and he's going to do a good job there. So it was great to see the old team. Commissioner Wayland, who was former Chief Wayland, former Commissioner Wayland came with me. And so we had three generations of Morehead Police Chiefs there. And it was just a good day. And that completes my report. Steve?
I thank you, Mr. Chair. And too, I would just note on your PTSD legislation, one of the challenges is not only are they not allowed to go back to work, but the governmental entity that they work for becomes responsible for their insurance through until they're medicare eligible. So also an impact. On the 24th, participated in the discussion on the opioid issues in the county with Commissioner Abiger and Commissioner Kravenoff. They've covered that very well. That afternoon, I participated in the underpass, 11th Street Underpass, and the contaminated soil discussion that's been addressed by Commissioner Mojo, Commissioner Campbell. On the 25th, we had county management. At that point, we toured the Resource Recovery Center, and again, we had cold, not a lot of heat there either. We had an update from HR on a series of different issues. And also, the state auditor is going to be coming out with the official position on gift cards usage regardless of whether or not they're in grants or not. And we currently have a gift card policy that indicates that we can utilize those, so we would have to retake a look at that once that comes out. We also talked about DocuSign for contracts. So as Board Chairs, when you get those contracts once or twice a year, and you're sitting down for a half hour signing, if there's a better way to do that through DocuSign. Talked about the finance, Norman, 25th also was in the Finance Committee that's been addressed through the Board today. Thank you for your direction there and allowing us to move forward. That afternoon, I met with the Blue Earth County Administrator. They're working through some different things about their probation department and wanted to know what it was like working through the DOC. On the 26th, I participated in the SWAC that's been well-covered. On the 26th, also met with Darren on a series of HR issues. On the 27th, participated in the MCC JPA meeting, which has been well addressed by Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Mojo. On the 27th, I participated in the county-owned properties that has been addressed. On the 30th, I participated in the Substance Use Crisis Use Facility. Again, just, I think, just touching base on Commissioner Campbell's and moving from FFNE into the project, also that benefit is that then that becomes warranted. And so it's great for them to identify those different areas that would be a benefit to the county. On the 30th, participated, on 31st, on the ribbon cutting, or excuse me, first with the Chief Deputy, Chris Martin. I go back with Chris even to his Lakeland days, and so before he was an officer, and so a great addition to our staff. And again, just acknowledging Lieutenant Gabe Tweeton and Lieutenant Schroeder were recognized for their actions in the Azteca piece, and also Lieutenant Schroeder was also recognized on the state association level for his actions. Participated in the Resource Recovery Open House. Again, it was wonderful to see the community participation, and also see so many people who were involved from the beginning. Again, to reiterate the thanks that the Commissioners have brought forward, also identifying Steve Moore for the great work that he did. And personally, I'd like to thank Joe Olson, Jackie, and Corey for the work that they did in establishing that open house, the Resource Recovery Ceremony. So on Thursday and Friday, I participated in the Future Task Force through AMC in St. Paul, as surprise of about 30 county commissioners, administrators, sheriffs, deputies, auditor treasures, and just kind of looking forward to what county government can look like in the years to come. We had a presentation from Bridge Talk, the Senior Economic Impact Analysis Analysts, excuse me, from the University of Minnesota Extension, did provide you the handout kind of for our region. And she gave a presentation on the economy, the workforce, and demographics within Minnesota, but then specifically provided our region the handout. We also, that evening, heard State Auditor Julie Blaha presented to the group. We talked about workforce challenges for both jail and dispatch facilities and what different counties are doing. And we also talked about jail programming and population management. We did provide the group an update on our river project that this Board supports within our correctional facility, and also heard from Dakota County on a potential project they're looking at. On the 6th, I met with Kim from the Recorder's Office, Joe Olson, Brian Melton, and also Ron down a series of different issues. Again, yesterday did send out information that this Board has sent a letter of concern in regards to the Clean Energy Bill by 2040. The Governor is signing that into law today at 2:00, so just to notify that. Following through on the Senator Kupac's Community Roundtable, if you are interested in planning the 10, we will post that, but there is a registration requirement. So if you can reach out to Jackie or I, so we can get that taken care of today, that would be great. And then finally, no, I'm not asking for any action today, but just a note to kind of continue to evaluate with Commissioner Gross being out at some point. If that becomes longer than a short period of time, we may want to have some sort of discussion on covering some of his committee assignments. So that concludes my report.
Mr. Chair, I, just the very last comment, I, you know, I think there's an awful lot of things where two of us serve on committees together, and there's some important things that are coming up. And we're having a Highway Tracking Committee meeting right after today now, where Commissioner Gross is part of. And I, you know, we wish him well right now, and we're not sure, you know, whether he's going to be gone a week or he's going to be gone a month, but I think we should be, I think we should be looking at having somebody be able to fill in on those committees that he's unable to be at while he's recovering. So I don't know, Steve, what actually you think, but it...
Maybe what we can do over the next week is kind of evaluate what's coming, what meetings he has coming up and kind of, as you mentioned, we do have a number of important committee meetings that I know that Commissioner Gross is a part of, and so, well, we can evaluate that. And again, in working with Commissioner Gross of getting that timeframe of his recovery, again, we're hopeful that'll be, as you mentioned, sooner than later, but...
Sure. Sure.
Mr. Chair.
Yes?
I did, I apologize, I did just one part of my reply.
Okay.
I did attend the 24th Planning Commission, and I just wanted to bring up that...
Commissioner Kravenoff, is your microphone on?
There we go. So on the 24th of January, as part of the Planning Commission, I went to that committee, or that commission, excuse me, and there was a tax amendment for a change as far as the minimum area for repairing or non-repairing lots that were on, in regard, would affect Turtle Lake and Sand Lake, and both those lakes are joined, are part in Clay County and part in Becker County. And anyway, the petitioner was Greg Anderson that brought this forward. He owns property in regard to some non-repairing lots that he has to the back. When the ordinance was put in in 2010, I believe it was, somewhere back, like, I think it was before that, it doesn't matter. Anyway, when they were put in, some of the width dimensions were twice what DNR requires, and so they, the board felt that was excessive, and they brought them back in line to the DNR requirements, and that then it would match up to Becker County, so then the whole lake is consistent. So anyway, just want you to know about area being, going from 80,000 to 40,000 square feet, and lot width going from 200 to 150. Anyway, that passed unanimously. I'm thinking, does that come forward to us? Does Matt bring that forward at some point? Okay, and then you'll get a little more depth with it. Also, our legal team is reviewing administrative penalties for multiple zoning violations. We had a great discussion on that, and I don't like wants that or anything, but they're going off to pass, that was the 2010 memorandum back at that point. Anyway, they're reviewing that, and they're going to bring back recommendations down the road. Thank you.
Okay. Brian, do you have anything? Jackie? Okay, we're adjourned.